Thank you for your patience. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
That just sounds like a "I'm ready for the afternoon." This is a celebratory party. Good afternoon. We've got a big crowd in front of us. All right. So first of all, I just wanted to thank you one more time and give a big round of applause for Week Wake High School marching band. And if there are any adult Indians in the house, I hear from you. All right. So this afternoon, we are gathered to celebrate the beginning of the transition to local control for the Newark Public School. This morning, the State Board of Education voted to return program and instruction and governance to the Newark Public School. As of that moment, the Newark Public School Advisory Board has dropped that advisory word, advisory board, and is now formally known as what it is, the Newark Board of Education. Today, we celebrate, today is the end of state control, the beginning of the process into full legal local control. Today, however, it is not really a end. Today is a beginning. And what we have to think about is the beginning. What is it that we want to do and have moving forward? And so, this is a press event, a celebratory press event, and there are so many people gathered here today. We've been waiting for 22 years. I'm going to just pause now as appropriate before I finish my comments. Now I'm going to ask Reverend Terry Simmons to please come forward with the word of praise.
Before I pray, there's one person who would have been here today had not the Lord transitioned him. And that person is Al Kopp. And if you would just bow your heads a moment in reflection of him and all of the great work that he did in the city of Newark and especially with the Newark Educational Success Board. Our God and our Father, we come today in a spirit of thanksgiving and a spirit of celebration. We come because you have kept your promise. You told us that if we walk and don't get weary, that you will always be by our side. So we've come today just to say thank you. Thank you for that Mandela spirit. Because even after 22 years, we never gave up. Even after 22 years, we kept trusting that this day would come. And so, we want to thank you for all of the work and the effort that was put forth by every organization who wanted to see this day come to pass. We thank you for NAACP. We thank you for POC. We thank you for our state legislators. We thank you for our county executives and all of those who have worked for this area. But most of all, we thank you for our drum major, our leader, the mayor of this great city, who knew that it would happen, Newark was possible, and knew what you were able to do. So we come just to say thank you. Thank you for bringing us to this point. And Lord, we thank you for a lot of things, but along with curriculum, we thank you most of all for governance. That means we can make decisions, our Father, for our children and for our community. But most of all, we need you now to give us the wherewithal to govern. Give us the wherewithal to not think about ourselves, but to think about others. Let us make that song true. If I could help some child as I pass along, if I could help some child with the word or song, if I could help them to get to where they need to be then, our work, our living, our struggle would not have been in vain. Thank you for the clergy that have prayed for 22 years. And Lord, you have done just what you said you would do. You would deliver us. And so, we thank you now, and as we go forth from here, we pray, our Father, that you will lead us and direct us, that one day, our children can come together and ask a question, and teachers will be there qualified to give them answers, so that learning will take place. It is in Jesus' name we pray. And all who love Newark say amen.
Amen. Thank you. And for those of you, for those of you who don't know, Reverend Simmons used to be not only a school board member in Newark, but he had served as the president of the Newark Board of Education in the past also, always of service to this city. And so, I want to just recognize a few people, and as I do that, I want to say that there are so many, we're all important, and there are so many people in the room who we could recognize, but we just absolutely simply don't have the time. We will be recognizing a few people before we move forward. And there may be some who are here that I don't see. So, I would like to recognize Assemblyman Ralph R. Caputo, Freeholder Wayne Richardson, Senator Ron L. Rice, Assemblywoman Cleopatra Tucker, Councilwoman Gail Chaneyfield Jenkins, Councilman Eddie Osborne. Have I missed anyone? Okay. Thank you. And at this point, I would just like to ask, there are a lot of people here, but if the school board members could please just move kind of to the front, the school board members who are here, and I can call all the school board members, whether they are here or not, and if you could just wave, they're all here, yeah, all right. And obviously, you know, and I'll make this brief, but I was a school board member for six years, and sometimes, even though the school board members work for free and they work really hard, a lot of times, they don't get recognition, even at events like this, and I always fuss about that. But today is as much the school board's day as it is everyone else's day. As they take on the monumental responsibility. They have always carried the weight, but now the weight is real. And they have listened to the occasion, and they have prepared themselves, and I know this, because I know the trainings and the preparations that they have been putting themselves through voluntarily over the last couple of years. And I want to give recognition to the Panasonic Foundation, who gratefully works with our board and helps to do onboarding and training for our school board members. And so, our school board members, Marquesa Kill, who is president, Tadea Vice President, and I didn't say chairperson, I said president, okay? Reginald Pleso, Gashay Carter, Crystal Montecano, Kim Gaddy, Josephine Garcia, Loisha Johnson, Via Owens. Is Gina here? Gina Mato? We have a student, okay, if you have a student in school board, yes, she's probably just getting out of school. We have a new student representative on our school board this year, Gina Mato. So please give a big round of applause to our school board members. And, school board members, I'd like to ask the people who are here representing community groups to come forward and walk around, if you could also kind of come forward. Okay. So, I'm not going to call every name or every organization, but you know, I do, we do have to recognize a couple of things. It's that some things are done on the legislative level, and some things are done via the community. And sometimes, it takes the action on the part of the community to sometimes move the government officials and other legislators. And so, it's important that we recognize that Newark is a history of struggle, okay? And we can start, you know, even if we start in recent, you know, history, to me, recent history, the last 50 years. So even if we start in that recent history with the parents of our good mayor, and that tradition is carried on in Newark, we are fighters. And just step forward, community people, please, who are fighters, okay? And some people, and you know, there's some people on this board, you know, you can step up too, Marquesa, step up, you know, Via, step up. Because this is the core of the activism in our city. They kind of use voice to things that sometimes people don't want to talk about, or don't want to hear, or whatever, but it gets the ball rolling sometime, and they keep with it. And we have to say thank you, because this is really kind of the core of Newark, is the people in the community who voice their opinions when they see wrong, and who stick with it until it's retired. So, thank you all, and you know, especially, you know, Dr. Wells, you know, we're glad, you know, to see you here, and you know, again, involved in Newark, because we need you, and so, thank you for being here. Thank you all. And so, Council President Trump was not able to be here today. She did leave a brief statement, so don't think I'm talking as much, because I feel like talking, I really don't. But she did ask that I read this statement, and specifically that I read it. So, "Statement of Return of Local Control of the Newark Public Schools from the Honorable Council President, Mr. Trump. As one who stood in the room as the announcement was made that the state of New Jersey was taking control of the Newark public school system, I was devastated beyond belief. As a former teacher in the Newark public school system, I and many teachers, administrators, and other professionals who had invested years of dedication to the children of Newark, listen in disbelief. For many years, the Newark public school system represented excellence. For those of you that do not remember, Week Wake High School was once named the number one high school in the nation. Today is an extremely joyful day for me. I wish I could be here with you today to personally share in this extraordinary moment in Newark's history. Long before I became an elected official, I was a teacher for 42 years. Today, I pledge to assist in every way possible to return the Newark public school system to the excellence it was previously known for. Congratulations to Mayor Raz Jay Garota, Angelique Richardson, and the Newark Board of Education for making the return of the Newark public school system to local control a reality. Thank you, Board President Trump." Okay. Thank you. Senator Tricia Moody has walked in. She, okay, Assemblywoman Emily Anna, thank you all. And for the Newark Public Schools, the VA, Valerie Wilson, Assistant Superintendent Oakesden, Martha Johnson, Superintendent Dawson. So, and I hope I haven't left anyone out, but we don't, we really can't stand here all afternoon and call the names, because everyone in here has contributed in some, in one way or another. We're going to now, I'm going to now call our first speaker of the afternoon, and this is a woman who is the head of a national organization, but a national organization that represents teachers in Newark, who has been a partner, who has been a friend to us, not only on the issue of local control, but also on the issue of the building of our community schools, and on helping us to learn how to share the responsibility for our children. I would now like to call up Randy Wyngard, President of the American Federation of Teachers.
So who's excited today? Oh, come on. That's not the Newark radio. Who is excited today? I can't tell you how fantastic it is to be in Newark today, to be with people like Senator Rice, who's been fighting for probably 22 years and one minute to make sure that we got control back, to be with Tony, to be with your indefatigable mayor, that is an SAT word, to be with our locals, the NTU and John, our state organization, the administrators, the reverends that are here, the community activists, the board that is here, to be here making sure we have a voice again for our children in this great city of Newark. That's why I'm here. Voice is key to democracy. Voice is key to justice. Voice is key to equity, and voice is key to opportunity. Voice is what the Newark school kids got today because of all of your work. I've been here many times where we've been fighting for it. I've been at the school board, as you all know, many times, fighting many battles on behalf of all of you. When the mic goes off, it means you should end. But today, my friends, for everyone who is excited about having voice, we need to make a commitment. We need to make a commitment to each other. We need to show the world that having voice in this great city is the start of a path to great public schools. The public schools have parents want to set their kids to, the educators want to work at, and most importantly, that kids are engaged, that kids can dream their dreams and achieve them. So I, for one, want to tell you, you have a commitment of the NTU, of the New Jersey, of AFT New Jersey, of the 1.7 million members of the AFT, to do and walk with this drum major, walk with this wonderful drum major act, walk to make sure that we do justice to ensure that this city is a beacon on the hill once again through its public school system. Thank you very much. Thank you.
An important part of the community voice in Newark has been the student voice. The most consistent and I will say, consistent vocal and impactful student voice in recent times has been that of the Newark Student Union during some very troubling years very recently in the history of our district. So I'm going to introduce Tanaja Brown. Tanaja is the past president of the Newark Student Union. And I don't know what she's going to say, but I know that the Newark Student Union was really a shining example, not just to students all over the country, but to adults all over the country, about how to organize for a cause. Tanaja is currently in her second year as an honor student at Rutgers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hello, my name is Tanaja Brown. I'm the former vice president and president of Newark Student Union. Now, I attend Rutgers University. I study in political science and journalism, and it's all because of this city, my mentors. So on behalf of the students, I'm here to say congratulations to the Newark community for taking back what was taken, and that's our voice, with the renewal of full local control to our NPS districts. This has been the end and the beginning of the necessity for us to share the responsibility of education. With that being said, it's fitting for me to briefly recognize some organizations that we all worked with, NJCU, NSU, Pults, ALI, YMS, POC, NTU, and New Pocis for grassroots work and dedication. I want to also thank the mayor and the mayor's office for the advocacy with the community and for the community, and keeping students first to help us get to this point. As we all know, power can seize nothing without a demand. And for 21-plus years, we have been demanding that Newark has full power over schools in our community. This is a day of celebration, but we cannot stop at the win. So what's next? The real win is achieving what the New Jersey Constitution states, is a thorough and efficient public education for students between the age of five and 18. When I think of this, I can't help but think that they need the community school model. Our next steps are to strive for comprehensive schools with safe and supportive environments that nurture and develop the whole student. We think about the importance of academic excellence after and alongside essential social and health support and services in our low-income neighborhoods. The local control, it means community voice, and to say so, not to close schools, which are the heart of the community, but to keep schools open with cultural relevancy and resources in all five doors. But we all know that this means that with local control comes great responsibility, to be involved with the decision-making and well-being of the schools, but to be united, because divided will fall. Local control moves democracy. We hold ourselves, the ones in power, accountable for the future of our children. We must not shift our focus, but stay, to have, we must have a clear vision and standards to improve our already great schools. I challenge district leaders to listen to educators and to educators and community members to cultivate great public schools. I challenge all of you, community members, stakeholders, parents, organizations across all institutions, to not look at the past, yes, to learn from history, but to look forward. We need to promote a culture of bringing parents and students together to create a strong collective voice. I'm on the speakers, y'all. We need to create more platforms and a huge alliance to make decisions together as a collective unit. Please keep in mind, not to just keep the community in mind, but to have all kinds of representation present when discussing our students' lives. It is not enough to inform each other of what's going on, but for all of us to be a part of the discussion, of the implementation of what we already deserve. But most importantly, I challenge all of you to include students as an integral part of the decision-making processes. They know what their schools deserve. So listen to students. They know what they want to learn. They should be a part of the curriculum making. They should be a part of even something as small or as big to them, at school lunch. We need to create, oh, because if students are not sitting at the table, then they're on the menu. Student and student voice is important, because local control means raising civic leaders and showing them what democracy looks like. This is what democracy looks like. It's showing them that when they speak up, that their voices will be heard. It's showing students that we vote for whatever we need done. It's showing students that we do not need appointed positions. Instead, we need to vote for the people who make decisions for our everyday lives. So, let's move on, Newark, with the power and capability that we already have. And let's remember that with great power comes great responsibility, a responsibility of cohesiveness, forward ever, backwards never. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Assemblyman Tom Giblin has come in, Assemblyman Giblin. And I just want to take a moment, just although Reverend Simmons spoke, if the clergy, if the faith-based leaders who are in the house, we can just step up to the front, just briefly before we move on, because we have in Newark, New Jersey, we have so much support from the faith-based community, and as you see, this is just a small representation, but it is a large, it is a large number of representatives, of faith-based leaders who are truly involved in moving the city forward, so I just did want to just give that, that little recognition before we move on. Understand that there's a process. Today begins the process. There's a transition plan that will be developed over the next three months. After the transition plan is developed, we will have a referendum to see if we keep an elected school board, or if we go to a mayor or school board, which we haven't had since 1984. And the last part of that process will be the selection of a new superintendent. So there is a process. We are involved in that process, but we have to understand that the school board doesn't run out of here tomorrow morning and run into Deuce Street and just start running the show. There's a process, and that process will lead to what we want. And now, without further ado, our mayor, your mayor, Mayor Raz Jay Garota.
Thank you. Great day. If, if, if I didn't think that the press and the folks wanted to hear from me, I would end it right after Tanaja's speech, because what she said is right on the money. Brilliant, 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 young lady. Educated at Newark Public School System, and is an honor student at Rutgers Newark. And in case some of you didn't know, Rutgers has increased Newark students in their class by 60%. 60%. So, so a few things have been going on in the city. A few things have been happening to make sure that we create pipelines for our young people to go to the schools right around the corner from their house. Paul Roberson said before I begin that the power of our demand is in the fact that what we ask for is right, that our demand becomes more powerful because what we're asking for is correct. It is the right and righteous thing to do. And so, all these people assembled here, all the elected officials from the state, from the county, from the city, our school board, our elected school board that is here with us today, all of us, the community activists, the clergy, the organizations, what we asked for was right. And we may have disagreed on many things along the way, but today, we all agree, we all assembled here today in one unified voice to say that what we asked for was correct, and so, we got what we needed, because we demanded it. and so we got what we needed because we demanded it. Now, I asked, when we were planning this, for Tanaja to come, because I remember going into Two Seated Street when those kids had barricaded themselves in that building. And at that point, I said that this has to end. That this must go away now. And anything or everything that I was going to be doing, I would have blinders on to make sure that this will not take place. That our children have to stand in front of us to fight for things that we know we should have. That they risk their life and their liberty and their education so that they can have a voice, and we should be fighting for them to have that voice. So wherever I spoke, wherever I went, whoever I met with, I had one thing on my mind, one thing that came out of my mouth, and that was local control. Anybody who talked to me, I said, "local control." Anybody who met with me, I said, "local control." No matter what they presented to me, I said, "local control." Why? Because slavery is wrong. It's always been wrong. It is wrong no matter who your master is, whether they're good or kind, whether they're mean or evil, whether they love you or they feed you extra food, whether they treat you nicely or not, whether they bring you scraps at the end of the night. It is wrong, it is wrong, it is wrong. And so we would never be satisfied, no matter, no matter how much we disagree on policy and all these things, we would never be satisfied until we get free. And I have to put it in that term, and people don't like when I put things in those terms, but there's no other way really to explain it. I was a teacher in nineteen ninety-five and a member of the NTU. I was a teacher rep in the NTU. When I was called to a big place, when Beverly Hall came and said, "You are now under the control of the state." We were annexed then. I was a teacher and stayed a teacher until I became an administrator. And was a member of CASA, and still am a member of CASA, as a matter of fact. I was a school administrator in this city. And all of that time, every time we witnessed one reform after the next reform after the next reform after the next reform, and we never had an opportunity to say what we wanted. We never had an opportunity to say whether we agreed or disagreed. The children never had an opportunity to have a voice. For twenty-two years, we've been a shadow in our own community. Not today. Not today. Today, by the grace of God, by the power of His will and the voice of the people, it is forward ever and back with never. Somebody said, "Well, what are we going to do to make sure this never happens again?" Well, I'm going to use every ounce of energy in my mind, my body, my soul, my spirit, and collectively, all of us together, I'm going to do the same thing to make sure this never happens again. The answers to our kids' education, we have them. And so now the hard part begins, y'all. We need unity. We need to forgive each other. We need to let some of these things go. We need to stop thinking about people who was here or who we want to go with, who's not here, who ain't going to be here tomorrow. We need to be embracing each other now. We need to be discussing what kids are learning in their classroom, how we fix these IEDs in these students, how we get the MSAT that the station's really working. We need to be thinking about the after-school programs our kids go to, their safety back and forth to school. We need to be thinking about community schools and wrapping ourselves around them. And every institution in this city, whether you're a university, or a corporation, or a nonprofit, or a private business, we can make sure that our schools are successful. And I'm going to tell you, every institution in this city has been waiting for this day. The only thing missing now is that we have to step up. And I know some of us have been in use, use to trying to sack the quarterback. Some of us have gotten really good at trying to sack the quarterback. And some of us sacked them a few times. Today, we are the quarterback. So all of our plays have to change. All of our plays have to change. All of our plays have to change. We can't fumble the ball, or throw interceptions, or give it up, or leave it on the ground, or when, or when the ball is on the ground, look it on the ground and blame somebody else for losing the ball. You know, when you lose the ball in football, the whole team jumps on the ground to recover the ball back. All of us in the community have to jump on the ball to recover the ball back, and not point fingers at people because the ball slipped out and got onto the ground. It's all of our responsibility to take the ball from this goal to the next goal, to score a touchdown. It's all of our responsibility that our babies graduate, that they go to the university, that they come back to the city of their birth, and they turn this city upside down. It's all of our responsibility. All of us, there's nobody exempt. There's nobody that we, that has no reason to back away. They can say, "I'm not in it," or "I don't want to throw the rock and hide their hands." We all responsible for this, whether you have kids in the district or not. Every last one of us. And our kids are depending and waiting. And when we go back to school, we tell them, and when you go back home and you tell them we have local control, what does that mean? What does it mean? It means now we make the decisions. And when we start raising our voice, we have to look in the mirror first. When we start fighting, we have to look at each other first. What happens when the enemy becomes us? And we have to become more retrospective and introspective, and think about what we're getting ourselves into. And remember, we should have always controlled our own destiny. And I'm going to sit down, but there are people who've asked me up until this day, "What does local control mean, or why should we have it?" And I say, "We should have it because every other American does." Because the Constitution of the United States demands that we have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That we should control our destiny, no matter our language, no matter the color of our skin, no matter, matter our lot in life. That we have a right to make a mistake and correct our own mistakes. That we don't need anybody to come and govern us, to rule us, or tell us what to do. That if something happens in my house, my mama and daddy fixes it. I don't call somebody else to come fix what's going on in my house. I might need some help, I might need some support, but my mama is my mama, and my daddy is my daddy, and my family is my family. And we make the decisions in our house. And so from this pulpit in Newark, I'm asking that the state relinquishes control of every municipality in this state that is under local control, that they let it go now, and they let it go forever. God bless the great city of Newark. God bless the people in Newark. Forward ever, back with never. Forward ever, back with never. Forward ever, back with never.
Okay, at this time, we, uh, we'd like to, uh, take any questions from the media.
Well, I guess there's a transition plan that has to be developed by the district and the school board, uh, hopefully with some community input, uh, to get us to the end of the year. Then there's an election that the people of the city must have to determine what form of school board representation they want, whether an elected or appointed school board. Uh, and after that, everything is turned over to us. I believe that we, that this school board has to begin thinking about a new superintendent, has to begin thinking about how we move the district forward, uh, as seamlessly as possible, and kind of try to continue some of the progress that's been happening and deal with some of the issues that we have. Well, uh, I, I support an elected school board. Obviously, uh, the folks in New York may think a little differently, uh, but we support an elected school board. The fight for an elected school board in Newark is a long and historical one.